Before we get further into debate, so let's allow the clerk to take roll call and then we can express all our frustrations when we get in the formal meeting. Go ahead, city clerk.
Councilmember Brettafield. Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Sparza.
Aye, present.
Councilmember Karbasi.
Here.
Councilmember Soria.
Here.
Council Vice President Capriolio is absent at the moment, and President Arias.
Here. All right, Councilmember Capriolio just walked in.
He's here.
Can you say president?
President.
All right, Councilmember President. So council, please go into your secondary link into closed session. We're going to close session now.
Point of order, Mr. President, I'd like the council to consider a motion to hear budget motions immediately before going to closed session.
Sure, there's a motion, there's a second. Council Vice President, Councilmember Karbasi and Brettafield are insisting that we go into budget motions now before going to closed session. They've made a motion, it's been seconded.
Why are you including me?
Because we're gonna vote. I'm just bringing you up to catch me up.
Oh, okay.
So there's been a motion by Councilmember Karbasi, seconded by Councilmember Brettafield. Now we're gonna do roll call on Councilmember Karbasi's motion, which is to go directly into budget motions and not begin with closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brettafield.
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes, sure.
Councilmember Sparza.
No.
Councilmember Karbasi.
Yes, and thanks for the consideration, Nelson.
Councilmember Soria.
She's frozen.
I think she's muted.
He's frozen.
I'll come back to her. Council Vice President Capriolio.
Yes.
Yes, for budget motions or gonna go to closed session first?
Closed session first.
Okay, so that's a no.
No.
Okay. Councilmember Soria? She's still frozen, okay. Council President Arias.
No.
No. Okay, so at the moment, it's a tie, and we need to hear from Councilmember Soria.
All right, the budget, the motion fails. All right, now there's gonna be closed session, so y'all have the links. Budget hearings for June 22nd, 23rd. And that we have a quorum. Looks like we're all here. Council Vice President Capriolio should be on his way to this room also. So let's see if we can go ahead and begin the meeting. This is a reminder, this is a continuation of the budget hearings. There will be no new public input taken. We've taken public input already during this budget hearing. We will begin with giving the council an opportunity to first withdraw any previous motion made. Is there any council member wishing to withdraw? Any motions previously made? You should have a list of all the budget motions. If you don't, let us know. We'll email you another copy. So you can have it in front of you.
I need a copy, President Arias.
Yes, yes. Can we send Councilmember Chavez a copy? All right, our city clerk will email you your 10th copy, Councilmember Chavez, as a dog ate it.
Me too.
Okay.
And Councilwoman Soria.
Everybody needs it.
I don't need it.
Okay.
Neither do I, or Nelson, or Mike.
Okay.
Or getting motion sickness.
All right, council, let's start off with, as we guys get the information from everyone, let's start off with the roll call to reconvene the meeting. City clerk?
Councilmember Brettafield.
Here.
Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Sparza.
Present.
Councilmember Karbasi.
Here.
Councilmember Soria.
Here.
Council Vice President Capriolio. And President Arias.
Here. All right, with that, council, let's begin. Is there any council members wishing to withdraw any of their previous motions made? If so, raise your hand and we can start with the withdrawals. Looks like.
Capriolio, maybe he's on top of that list. Is he back in the room yet?
He's not in the room yet. We'll go, we'll go come back to him once he re-enters the room. I know we're all hoping that he withdraws most of his 15 motions. But until he gets back, I see no withdrawals from the rest of the council, so let's go to the next phase of these motions. Anybody wishing to amend any of their motions? Councilmember Brettafield, do you have your hand up?
Well, yeah, I have a question, just a point of order. Are we gonna do that, the amending or making new motions? Because I have a new.
We're gonna go withdraw, amend, and then new motions.
Okay.
All right, that way our city clerk can keep track of our chaos.
Okay.
All right, anybody wishing to amend any of their motions? Mike, you have your hand up?
It's for new motions.
Okay. All right, it looks like nobody wants to make progress, so we're gonna go down to making new motions. We'll hopefully allow the elder statesman of Mr. Council Vice President to withdraw some of his 50 motions, but until then, we will consider new motions. With that, Councilmember Brettafield, you have the floor, and then Councilmember Karbasi.
Yeah, I've spent a lot of time this weekend and latter part of last week along with Councilmember Karbasi. We've looked at other cities, how they spent their CARES Act funds, how they've made a nexus for those funds. And so I wanna talk a bit about that and then make a motion. Mike and I have been doing some specific research, looking at ways to help people in southwest and southeast Fresno that have been adversely affected by COVID-19. Research regarding COVID-19 has demonstrated, as we've heard, that disproportionate impact has been happening on minority communities. The CDC recently put out a report that I reviewed that suggests, quote, "a disproportionate burden of illness and death among racial and ethnic minority groups," end quote. The data specifically indicates the African-American community has a higher hospitalization rate and a high rate of death in comparison to their overall population in the United States. Across the country, the black community makes up 22% of COVID-19, though they represent just under 13% of the population. We also know minority groups in general have higher rates of other diseases such as hypertension, diabetes, obesity, and these diseases, when present, have worse outcomes when someone contracts 19. Now, the CDC cites many economic and social conditions contributing to this COVID-19 having a greater impact on minority communities. And some of these conditions include racial minorities living in more densely populated areas, what they call residential housing segregation, end quote, which resulted from past unjust policies such as redlining, which we're all familiar with. The CDC cites poor living conditions where minorities live farther from grocery stores, medical facilities, quote, "making it more difficult to receive care of sick and stock up on supplies that would allow them to stay home," end quote. We also know that many parts of our city, particularly southwest and southeast Fresno, have many needs that have gone unmet, and in some areas don't have even the basic infrastructure such as sidewalks, green space, clean air, developed neighborhoods. If we are to successfully address the adverse consequences of emergencies like COVID-19 in more vulnerable populations, then we have to provide the resources to improve the quality of life for our south residents and those communities that are more adversely affected. This means addressing hazardous sites, air pollution, water quality, lack of infrastructure, need to clean streets and alleys, alley, improve transportation in neighborhoods, create greater educational opportunities, more parks, more recreational facilities, and improve the ability to access healthy food via major grocery stores. All of these factors contribute to COVID-19 having a greater and disproportionate impact on southwest Fresno residents and minority groups. As we all can recognize, our residents in south Fresno too often have been ignored at City Hall. Councilmembers Chavez and Arias have been and are strong advocates to change this. We've recently committed $5 million for COVID testing in south Fresno in partnership with UCSF. We've spent money to help small businesses and assist with housing needs, but that's not nearly enough. We need to make real changes in southwest and southeast Fresno to help mitigate the impacts of COVID-19 and to reduce the stress and adverse circumstances that make our black and Hispanic communities more susceptible to this disease. As I've outlined, there's clearly a nexus to use the CAREX money for this. With that in mind, I'd like to make the following motion. I make a motion to appropriate $30 million of the CARES Act funding, nearly one-third of the entire amount of money the City of Fresno received, to respond to the COVID-19 public health emergency as follows. $20 million to southwest Fresno and $10 million to southeast Fresno. These funds would be for any expense allowed under the CARES Act, including but not limited to: One, improve technology and internet access infrastructure for remote learning for students and telework for employees. Two, build sidewalks where none currently exists, improve the streets and landscaping. Three, similar to Amazon and Ulta, provide incentives to attract major grocery stores to southwest Fresno to increase the availability of fresh food. Four, initiate more water and sewer infrastructure for greater residential development. Five, build more parks, trails, and green space. Six, restore and clean alleys. Seven, create more access to public transportation. Eight, work to eradicate any adverse impacts to air and water quality. Nine, create more business, opportunities for business development and expansion. Now, I believe there is a clear nexus to use this CAREX money in this way. We've looked at other cities, other communities, and some of them are doing this very thing. So I hope the council will support this. I think this is a big move, and I think the money can be used in this way. I've talked to attorneys, I've looked at other cities, as Mike, and so I hope the council will support this, and I think we can make a real difference with people who are struggling with COVID-19. Thank you.
I'm gonna second that motion, Mr. President.
All right, gentlemen, we have your motion made, your second. I would ask that you submit that motion to city clerk to make sure that we capture the record accurately. Is that all your motions, any motion for council member?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have councilor, I'm sorry, city manager, would you like to say something?
I would, thank you. Yes, if we could have that in writing, and then Councilmember Brettafield, you mentioned other cities that you've looked into. If you could provide that list for us too, I think that would be helpful.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll go to Councilmember Karbasi and then Councilmember Sparza.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things I wanted to get on the board, if possible. Is Scott Moser available right now, by any chance?
I believe Scott is on.
Well, Adam, on to the panelists, give us a second.
Okay. In the meantime, I'd like to make a motion to allocate $10,000 towards security upgrades for Riverbottom Park and the Hernan and Milburn Overlook. We had unfortunately a shooting out there, and there is a need for some security upgrades to the area, including cameras and surveillance.
Is there a second for Councilmember Karbasi's motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilmember Soria. I appreciate that. Another motion for $100,000 towards a shade structure at Logan Park. This is probably on the list, one of the highest needs for that neighborhood.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councilman. Okay. And then while we're waiting for Scott, I've got another motion. In carryover last year, we allocated some funding, so we talked about safer sidewalks to schools. One of the most impacted areas, adjacent to Star Elementary, is left-turn phasing at Sierra and West, and there have been a lot of accidents out there. So I'm halfway towards my goal for that project, so I wanted to make a motion to allocate $300,000 towards that upgrade for Sierra and West.
Councilmember, can I just have you repeat the motion? It's the $300,000 for what school and what project?
Towards the District 2 Public Works budget for Sierra and West.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
All right, there's a second by Councilmember Brettafield. Councilmember Karbasi, continue.
I have one last motion, and this is kind of a big one, and I know we're gonna have discussions, but I just, I just wanna get it on the board, to allocate $100,000 per council district for sidewalk repairs.
Second.
Second.
Sidewalk for everyone, since this is.
Every district.
Eve, and we will all agree to that. All right.
And Director Moser is available right now as well.
Thank you. I have one question, Director. Can you let, just give us some background on the request of the B-PAC Committee, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, about the ATP Coordinator and the requests that they've had in years past?
Absolutely. Counsel, can you hear me? All right, good afternoon, Scott Moser, Public Works. So the, we, as Public Works, we really value the contributions and hard work of the B-PAC, of this monthly working group. From a staffing perspective, we do each month have an assistant director and two division managers regularly attending the B-PAC and working through questions, issues, priorities, so we really value their work. There has been a request for an ATP coordinator as well, who would be someone full-time to be working on pedestrian and bicycle projects, not from a design perspective, but from a reporting to the B-PAC, watching legislative issues, helping with planning. So no doubt, that would improve the process, but it has not been a budget request from the department or the administration in years past.
I wanted to make a motion, but in light of the current situation with our budget and understanding the priorities, Public Works is so important. I'm sure there are other things, other positions that are very critical to assign. I just wanna, I'm gonna hold off on that and not do that, and I appreciate that you have staff that go to those meetings. When I've gone to the meetings, I've seen Mr. Benelli there, just to make sure that there is a continued commitment in light of COVID and the recession we're facing to work with that committee, and just being abreast of any legislations coming forward or any opportunities to support their mission.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Karbasi. If you're done, then we'll go to Councilmember Sparza.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I've got one new motion. I'd like to allocate $100,000 specifically of CDPG dollars for rehabilitation efforts of 4403 East Tillery Avenue. That's the President of Bodies and Needles nonprofit's building. You got a second?
Second.
That will be my new motion, something forward.
Motion by Members Sparza, seconded by Member Soria. Does that you complete your motion, council member?
Yes, sir, keeping it, yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Soria, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. I'd also like to put a motion forward that would be funded through CDPG, and that's the feasibility study that I need for the vacation of the Fresno High Triangle at Weldon and Echo.
Is there an amount?
Whatever the feasibility study is, I don't know if Scott Moser, it's a small corner there, so I don't know, is he still around? Scott, would you give us an estimate of what that would take to do the traffic study?
And again, I'm gonna caution, we will know, I'll have staff look into it, but I don't believe that would be CDPG eligible, but we can figure that out and report back on Thursday. Scott, I see Scott now.
Scott, do you need $10 million or 20 for a feasibility study to vacation like a little 10 square feet of parcel?
Good afternoon. So the feasibility study is only $473. That goes to all outside utility companies, city departments. Then if the council chose to actually vacate that triangle, the cost to vacate is, for the hearing runs about $1,500. However, we'd have to look at what other requirements are involved. Are there expenses to move utilities? Are there traffic issues? But that's just the procedural aspect of the vacation.
So.
Councilman, would you like to convert your motion to direction? Looks like it's pretty minimal cost.
Yeah, if we can find those dollars, I'm sure, you know. How much did you say? About 1,200 bucks?
It is right around $500 for a feasibility study and 1,200 to actually go through the vacation.
So if I could allocate up to $1,500 to make sure that that is, that gets done?
Second. All right, motion's been made, it's been seconded by Member Karbasi.
Okay, and then the other, the other motion that I wanted to make, I've been working on the area of Shaw and Polk on the, on the west, the west side of it, but I want to make a motion to include beginning to, or to complete the acquisition of the right-of-way on the east side of Polk to complete the avenue widening from Gettysburg to Shaw, and that is CDPG eligible, so through CDPG dollars.
Second.
Thanks.
And Councilmember Soria, did you say an amount? I'm sorry.
Um, no amount. Can Scott maybe talk to the amount of acquisition?
We could, we could look into that. There he is again.
We already know the number. We just had, we were planning to phase it, and so we've, we've completed all the dollars or have all the dollars for the west side now. I wanna move on to the east side. So do you remember, Scott?
Counsel, we, as Public Works, we will need to look into that. We prepared a cost estimate, I believe, last year for the east side, but we will need to look into that and can report that back to city manager and to council.
Okay, perfect, so, so we can start looking at that. I remember I mentioned to you some of the property owners on the east side, like the liquor store, they're interested in selling their property now, so I know that that was one of the biggest concerns with the acquisition, because we thought that they may not wanna give up their store. The gentleman's ready to retire, so I think it's a good opportunity to begin to look at the acquisition of that east portion of Polk.
Henry Fiero has a question too. Henry, do you wanna unmute your, your video?
Yes.
Yeah, he's getting on.
Hello, Council President, Henry Fiero, Budget Manager. I had a quick question for Councilmember Soria.
Yeah, we can hear you.
So I wanted to ask the question on the previous motion related to the feasibility study. I heard two numbers. I heard half a million for the feasibility study, then I heard another 1,500.
It's a, it is 500 for the feasibility study and 1,200 for the hearings, so total of 1,700.
Great, thank you.
So to clarify, these are in addition to the public works projects that council already approved for FY '21 for CDPG, correct?
Well, didn't we get an additional allocation that we will be.
We have a, Councilwoman, we have a CDPG meeting today at 2:30, so we can get an update on all the CDPG allocations.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then.
The hopper.
Okay, and then the last thing that I do wanna make a motion for, I want to allocate $50,000 to develop a master plan for the Blackstone, the Blackstone area on McKinley, where we're gonna see the great separation, and I know that we are gonna be acquiring some land, given the dollars that we're getting for the great separation, but I want us to begin to start thinking about how we're gonna master plan that area for additional housing, which we know is, is a great opportunity for us.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
All right. Councilman, are those all your motions?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Sparza, you have the floor.
Yes, I, I wanted to make a motion, just kind of in keeping with the last one that I seconded. I'd like to allocate $100,000 toward exploration, outreach, and analysis of a P-bid on the central and southern portion of Blackstone Avenue. So that's a property-based improvement district.
Can I ask a clarifying question with that one?
Sure.
In our experience, once a P-bid is created, the P-bid, the property assessment that comes from the properties within that district reimburses the city for creation of that P-bid, could your motion also include that, that we would be reimbursed for that amount?
Uh, sure, you know, and again, this is just for the outreach and the analysis. This is not to say that one wouldn't be created. So I guess you're saying in the event that it is created, that we receive reimbursement?
Exactly.
I'm okay with that in terms of the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there a second for the council member's motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, my member Soria. Councilmember, are those all your new motions?
For the time being.
All righty. Well, I think if the mayor is watching, we're probably close to giving him a stroke with all the new expenditure plans, but hey, we're not done yet. Councilmember Chavez is gonna let us land this ship. Go ahead, or plane, or whatever you land, council member. If you can pop up your video, your next online. Think you might have lost a council member.
Proposal.
I did wanna ask a question, Council President?
Go ahead as we get Councilmember Chavez back.
Okay, so, and I don't know if this is for the administration or, probably for the administration, so my colleague, Councilmember Brettafield and Councilmember Karbasi made a proposal for the COVID dollars. Is that part of the budget? I thought that was separate from the budget. Are we gonna be making it part of the budget, or?
Some of your other motions have included using CARES dollars, so what I thought we would do is do the research necessary on whether or not there, those are eligible expenses, and allow you to vote on the motions on Thursday, and then we'll figure out how to handle the CARES dollars. But the CARES dollars, the, the timing for the CARES dollars runs a bit separately than our budget, because we have to spend all of those by December 31st, and so I'll be meeting with Mike this week on all of your motions that are tied to CARES dollars, and we'll figure out how we handle those on Thursday.
I want to clarify, though, will the city attorney or legal staff be involved in those discussions as well?
Of course, Councilmember Karbasi.
And our legal counsel just reminded us that the CARES Act, like any other budget dollar, has to be appropriated, so it is an appropriate motion and it is appropriate discussion for us. With that, Councilmember Chavez, we have about $100 million in new motions. Would you like to withdraw some of your motions so we can afford them all?
All right, let me get in on the action. Let me do a motion for $100,000 for a facade improvement program along the Kings Canyon corridor.
Can you repeat the motion? You cut off a little bit.
$100,000 for a facade improvement program along the Kings Canyon corridor.
Got it.
And, and then also let me make a motion to do artificial turf for the Pillable Soccer Park there using CDPG funds.
Second. Hey, on the facade improvement, can we add the tower?
Sure, why not?
Where's, Gary?
Seconded.
All right, the first motion is $100,000 for facade improvement for small businesses to cover Kings Canyon and Tower District corridor.
Yep. Second motion was for the Pillable's Park, the artificial turf.
Second.
And then the third one is for a top lot on the Pocket Park on Hamilton and Armstrong area.
Second.
Okay.
All right, council member.
And then the last one is to put an airport in District 5, too, just like.
We just need somewhere to land his plane every council meeting.
Councilmember, if you made a motion to amend the fare drones for that airport, I would second it for you. All right, are those all the new motions for the council?
For now. For now.
For now.
All right, council, I have my own that are about $20 million, but I'll wait till Thursday.
Good lord.
All right, council, while those are, that completes our agenda today. On Thursday, we will commence with our regular scheduled meeting as well as voting on all the motions. If you have any additional motions between now and then, please email them to the city clerk, and we will accept them contingent on them being, receiving a second at the meeting so that we have this motion she completely filled out inaccurate, and it could be posted for public comment. With that, any, anything else before we close this meeting?
Did we not get Council Vice President back in the, back in the rotation?
No, he's still in the courtroom, so we'll wait for the council member on Thursday to see if he can withdraw some of his motions, if he so chooses to. All right, seeing that.
Council President, just really quick, do we know when the federal government is gonna weigh in on their finalizing of the CARES flexibility? Do we get formal notification? I guess it's a question for staff.
Could you repeat the question?
Yeah, do we get notification of when they're gonna make a determination for the flexibility of the CARES dollars from the federal government? I understood they were-
I think we have all, I, I think we have all the information we're gonna have from the federal government on the CARES Act. If there's any changes, they would be made when they take up a new bill in July.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
All right.
You're welcome.
All right, council, then I think we're good.
Wait, Council President?
Yes, last word, miss.
Last word, sorry. I just wanted to ask in terms of process, do you think, and you know, just also for my colleagues, do you guys think that we will make a final budget vote on Thursday, or should we push it to the 30th?
I think the 30th works better.
I'll make a motion.
Counsel, with all the motions and all the work that we just did today, and that we may have more between now and then, is to do our regular meeting, all in the morning, take on votes on the motions in the afternoon on Thursday, delay a vote on the final budget till the 30th. That way we have enough, staff has enough time to respond to all the motions and information that we requested.
Okay, sounds good. So we don't have to vote on it.
If that's good for the group, then we'll plan on a final budget vote on June 30th.
I suppose we could potentially push over some of the motion votes to the 30th as well, potentially, depending how long the council meeting goes on Thursday.
Ideally, we would like to have direction on all the motions as soon as possible, and, and delaying them till the 30th really puts us in a predicament.
Yeah, City Manager Mike, it's gonna be to get my colleagues to weigh in final, on all the motions on Thursday, so.
Sounds good.
Any final motion that the council has, please submit them to city clerk, and we will accept them contingent on them receiving a second on Thursday, and then we will vote. What I'll do is, on the morning session, council, is accept any new motions on Thursday morning and then vote on all motions Thursday afternoon. Okay? All right, Tim, nice to see the top of your head, and being on video now, and come up with the $30 million for the CARES Act. Thank you, I'll have a good one, the rest of the day.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys. Bye.